Commissioner Warblin on Zoom. We, I am officially calling to order the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission on March 9, 2022. Commissioner Childs, can we ask you to lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Yes. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let me read a brief, first we do the roll call. Okay, Mr. Feinstein, will you make the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Warblin?
Here.
Commissioner McDonald?
Present.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Evans is absent this evening. Commissioner Cruzen?
Present.
Commissioner Childs and Commissioner Matthews?
Okay, let me read a brief statement about information regarding public comments. Persons wishing to address the Planning Commission on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission may do so provided no action may be taken on off-agendized item except as authorized by law. Off-agendized items from the public will be taken under consideration without discussion by the Commission and may be referred to staff. Comments will be accepted in person or via Zoom. If you wish to make a comment on an agendized item in person, please complete one of these green cards and pass it to the front. When joining via Zoom, please use raise your hand feature or press star nine on your phone to request to speak. You will be called on by name and have three minutes to speak. And the next item is approval of the agenda. Mr. Feinstein, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes.
May I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. We'll vote via roll call. Mr. Feinstein, will you conduct the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Warblin?
Approved.
Commissioner McDonald?
Approved.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruzen?
Yes.
Commissioner Evans is absent. Commissioner Childs?
Approved.
And Commissioner Matthews?
Approved. The next item is approval of the minutes for January 26, 2022 Planning Commission. Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, may I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of January 26, 2022.
And a second?
Oh, second.
Mr. Fein, it's been moved and seconded. To approve the minutes as submitted, Mr. Feinstein, will you please conduct the roll call vote?
Yes, Commissioner Warblin?
Approved.
Commissioner McDonald?
Approved.
Commissioner Smith?
Approved.
Commissioner Cruzen?
Yes.
Commissioner Evans is absent. Commissioner Childs?
Approved.
And Commissioner Matthews?
Approved. Public comment, this is a time for the public to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. I will now open the public comment period. Do we have any speaker cards?
At the moment, we do not.
And anybody on Zoom?
We are not showing anybody with their hands raised.
Okay, I now close the public comment period. Scheduled matters, the next item on the agenda is scheduled matters. For each agendized item, there will be a presentation by city staff. For items, for items that involve application requests, I will then ask the applicant to address the commission if they so desire. Then I will open the public hearing via Zoom. I will close the public hearing after all comments have been provided and after all of our questions regarding the testimony during the public hearing have been answered. After the public hearing is closed, the Planning Commission will deliberate on the item and may have additional questions of staff. We cannot take any additional testimony or questions from the public after the hearing is closed. The commission will then vote on the item. Item A is Dutch Bros. And this is a presentation by Kaylee Slaver to, on behalf of Dutch Bros Fairfield, Inc., to develop a 950-square-foot service building with associated drive-through off of Travis Boulevard. The staff person is Maely Sheen, and we turn the time over to you.
I like Dutch Bros. All right. Good evening, Commissioners and those of you joining us this evening. My name is Maely Sheen, and I will be presenting the Dutch Bros item this evening. The project is located on a .8-acre site off of Travis Boulevard. The site is currently developed as a parking lot, and the zoning designation is CC Community Here we have a contextual map to give you a better sense of where the project is located in the city. You have Travis Boulevard. This is Oliver Road, and then, of course, I-80. Some key markers to point out is behind the Dutch Bros site is the Dollar Tree. To the left on the screen is Taco Bell. To the right is Solano, California Highway Patrol. And then across the street, you have the Wood Creek Plaza or the Rayleigh Shopping Center. The site has a general plan and zoning designation of, oh, excuse me, I see there's a mistake there, of CC Community Commercial. The zoning designation is also CC Community Commercial. Apologies for the typo. As you may recall, the project was heard and reviewed at the January 12 Planning Commission meeting, where it failed to advance with a 3-3-1 tie vote. Issues of concern that were discussed during the meeting included parking as it related to the retail tenant space. The project initially had an approximately 1,700-square-foot retail tenant proposed in addition to the Dutch Bros space. Based on that square footage, the retail tenant was required to provide nine parking spaces. And although the project proposal provided 24 parking spaces, there was concern that the drive-through queuing could overflow into the parking area and obstruct those parking stalls. The drive-through overflow was most likely, or if I can speak for the group, was the primary point of concern. Not only was there concern that the drive-through queue could overflow and impede parking, there was also concern that it may overflow onto Travis Boulevard and impede flow of traffic on that roadway. With the popularity of Dutch Bros, how much additional traffic would be added to Travis Boulevard was also a topic of discussion. And lastly, how the potential traffic could impact the operations of the neighboring H, or sorry, CHP offices was an item of concern. At the January meeting, we heard from a CHP representative that there are currently challenges for police vehicles to traverse Travis Boulevard and get onto I-80. Ultimately, the tie vote discussion led to the Planning Commission requesting staff to work with the applicant and CHP for more analysis and to bring the project back for another hearing. So since that January meeting, all the parties did just that, and here are the project revisions. To address the retail parking concerns, the applicant team has removed the retail component. To address the overflow queuing and traffic on Travis Boulevard, the site plan has been redesigned. There are now three drive-through lanes that can accommodate 25 vehicles. The escape lane that allows vehicles to get out of the drive-through has been enlarged. And additionally, three order-waiting parking spaces have been incorporated. To ease any potential impacts on the CHP offices, the applicant has agreed to provide off-site improvements to Travis Boulevard. The improvements include painting "Keep Clear" striping on both the east and westbound lanes of Travis Boulevard and widening an existing emergency vehicles-only access median break, that is, exists on Travis Boulevard. So here is the site plan. Generally, the layout is the same, but I'll go ahead and highlight those revisions. As mentioned, the retail component has been removed, so here you have a 950-square-foot building purely for Dutch Bros. The existing 24 parking stalls are to remain and be utilized for the project. Per city code and based on the square footage, five parking spaces are required for the proposed building. As previously noted, the project now has three drive-through lanes that can accommodate 25 vehicles. The escape lane has been extended, so in the event car number one is holding up the line, cars two through five can pull out of line and go to the designated order-waiting parking stalls. In addition to the onsite revisions, the applicant is proposing off-site improvements. You have, the Dutch Bros site is right here, and just next door are the CHP offices. That site has two driveways. When police vehicles need to get to the highway, they can exit this left driveway, go to the stoplight that is on, at Oliver, and do a U-turn, come back down Travis and enter the on-ramp. That's, I'm sorry, it's off the screen. Or they can exit this right driveway, go through that median break, and get onto the highway. The issue with doing that particular movement is that oftentimes, traffic builds up on Travis Boulevard, and they don't have a clear path to cross both the east and westbound lanes. And additionally, the median is constructed at an angle in which the police vehicles often clip the corner.
Excuse me just for a second, can I get clarification? When you suggest them coming out of the other side, the left side there of the parking, you're saying they're going to that light. That light currently isn't a legal U-turn, but as a CHP, they would be making that U-turn?
Correct. As an emergency vehicle, they can make that U-turn.
Yeah, and during the meeting that staff had with the CHP or traffic engineer communicated to the, to the head of that office who spoke at our last meeting, that they do have the ability to make that U-turn there. It's really just for, for regular cars, but emergency vehicles are perfectly welcome to make that U-turn.
So the proposed off-site improvements will resolve these issues. Here are those improvements. So the "Keep Clear" striping will deter vehicles from blocking that segment of road so that police vehicles can exit. And in addition, improvements to the median will widen. It'll basically take away that little red chunk, widening it, ensuring that the proper turn movement is available. So shifting back to the project site, here is the proposed landscape plan. The site revisions had nominal modifications to the proposed plan. Landscaping will retain existing planting as well as adding shrubs, mulch, and trees. In addition to the landscaping, there will be stormwater treatment areas located at the front here. The proposed architecture design of the building is the same as the initial proposal, of course, removing that retail tenant component. This is a standard design for the current generation of Dutch Bros throughout the state. The project meets city design guidelines by proposing a variety of building materials, movement in the elevation, changes in roofline heights, and detailing such as awnings to create visual interest. This front elevation right here on that bottom right corner is the elevation that would be facing Travis Boulevard. When it comes to development conditions, there are not too many key ones to note as the project has been designed to meet city standards. Two project-specific conditions highlighted here are, there's an existing reciprocal easement agreement with the Dollar Tree that's located at the back of the site. That easement has to stay in place. And the stormwater treatment areas that are proposed will need to be aesthetically enhanced with the proper plant palette and hardscaping such as river rock. City code requires drive-through uses obtain a conditional use permit for the operation aspects of the project. Key conditions from the use permit include a prohibition on selling alcoholic beverages, limitations on outdoor speaker noise. I do also want to mention that this project does not propose any menu boards or speakers. However, that condition is still in place in the event that the site is replaced with a different drive-through use. There are multiple conditions that reference upkeep and maintenance of the property. A condition was added requiring that all truck deliveries occur outside of business hours. This is to ensure that there's going to be no conflict with the drive-through operations. And lastly, an overflow queuing plan is required. An overflow queuing plan is essentially a contingency plan in the event that the drive-through lanes do overflow into the parking lot or onto Travis. That plan must identify implementation measures for the business operator to eliminate or reduce that overflow traffic. Measures could include traffic cones that would funnel the drive-through lanes to a back parking lot that's actually tucked behind the CHP offices, or it could include temporarily closing the drive-through. And so while on the topic of traffic and queuing, these next few slides provide information on the traffic and queuing analysis that was provided as part of the project application. This has been included to address some of the discussion points that the Planning Commission had at the January meeting. This table provides queuing analysis on three comparable Dutch Bros locations. Tonight, I'm going to focus on the Sacramento location as it has the highest figures in terms of impact. The queuing analysis was conducted during peak AM and PM hours in 15-minute intervals. Queues were studied from the pickup window to where the drive-through lane splits, as noted in these two columns here. So this column is the number of vehicle queues up until the split point, and then the second column is the number of vehicle queues beyond that split point. Walking through the figures here, the square bracketed numbers indicate the number of queuing or vehicle spaces available. For the Sacramento location, the drive-through could accommodate 10 vehicles, three from the window to the split, and then seven in two dual lanes. The next set of bracketed numbers indicate the number of cars that were observed in the drive-through during the timeframe. The Sacramento study had three vehicles stacked at all times. Looking at the vehicle stacking where the drive-through splits into two lanes, these figures are identified by lane one, lane two, and then in the parentheses, the total. So for example, lane one had four cars, lane two had four cars, for the total of eight. These bold green figures are the maximum number of vehicles that were evaluated during the analysis timeframe. 4:00 PM was the busiest timeframe at the Sacramento site, where there were five more vehicles than there were stacking spaces available, so they were overflowing five And then the red is the exact same but for the AM hours. 7:15 was the busiest timeframe in Sacramento, where there were three more vehicles that were overflowing the available stacking. The important items to take away from this analysis is that this Sacramento location was the worst-case scenario in the three comparable sites they evaluated, and the proposed Fairfield project tonight has doubled the amount of that worst-case scenario of 12 cars with five overflowing. The proposal has 25 stacking spaces in addition to the onsite and off-site design criteria that has been put together as part of this proposal and the overflow queuing plan that is required as part of the conditional use permit. The last bit of information from the traffic analysis I believe is important to share is the pass-by rate. Pass-by rate is the percentage of vehicles that are already on the road that are now swinging by the project site. So for example, let's say you travel Travis Boulevard every day to go to work. Now there's a new Dutch Bros built, you might stop by to pick up a coffee, but you would be driving Travis Boulevard no matter what, if that Dutch Bros was there or not. And so this study shows that 88% of the expected traffic for the proposed project is a pass-by trip. So that calculates to only the addition of seven new vehicles in the AM hour and 10 new vehicles in the PM hour that would be traveling the project site that weren't already going down Travis Boulevard. And this brings me to my last informational slide. In compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, the project was evaluated for environmental impacts and was found to be exempt per Class 32 or infill development. The exemption criteria states that the project must be consistent with the general plan and zoning ordinance. The site must be less than five acres in a developed area. There can be no habitat value for endangered, rare, or threatened species, and the project will have no significant traffic noise, air quality, or water quality impacts. The project meets all of those mentioned criteria. This is a lot of information coming at you, so I did a quick summary slide here. There is an existing reciprocal easement agreement that must remain in place for access to the site. to the site and the Dollar Tree. The proposed building is now 950 square feet, single-tenant, just for Dutch Bros. It will be a maximum height of 24 feet. Five parking spaces are required and 24 parking spaces are provided. Revised site configuration included three drive-through lanes to accommodate 25 vehicles, the enlarged escape lane, the three designated order-waiting parking stalls. The landscape and bioretention basins are to remain. A conditional use permit is required, and off-site Travis Boulevard improvements are proposed, the keep-clear striping, and widening the emergency vehicle access median break. So with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve resolution PC 2022-02, granting approval for the development review and use permit. I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have. The applicant team is in person and I believe also on Zoom if you have questions for them as well. Thank you.
Ms. Sheehan, once again, a very professional and thorough presentation. We thank you for that and for so carefully listening to the concerns of commission members and addressing them in this presentation. I now turn it over to the commissioners for questions for staff or the applicant.
I had a question. It's actually two questions. One, could you tell me what the difference from the change with the escape lane from the original to the proposed?
Yes, I believe it's just been enlarged. Let me, sorry, pull the plans. Oh, actually, haha, there we go. Before, it didn't extend as far back. So you see it's going to about car four or five. Originally, it was stopping shy of maybe three. And if I'm misspeaking, our, the applicant engineering team is here.
Thank you. And then my second question was, thank you for the analysis with the Sacramento Dutch Bros. I was just curious, did they have a queuing permit as well, or what was their solution when they were overstacked?
As far as I'm aware, I don't know if they had an overflow queuing plan. Based on that study, it appears that overflow was occurring. Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have more information on how their site operates.
I would like to, and maybe this is a question more for staff. Do we get any clarification as to what the procedure, process, and why that intersection, the one when you come out that we're talking about with the U-turn is that is illegal today, was not always that way, and it was changed some years ago? And what's the process of changing it back? Why was it changed and is that still going to be like, just, that's not going to happen?
Yeah, we have our traffic engineer who can address that. I don't believe there's actually room to accommodate a U-turn, but I'll let Garland speak to that.
Yes, my name is Garland Wong. I'm the city's traffic engineer. We prohibited that movement some time ago, like you said, and it was because we had a number of vehicles that were making three-point turns. Generally, what you need is you need more than, what you have there right now, you have about 28 feet of cross-section. In order to make a U-turn, you need about 34, 35 feet. And so we prohibited that movement because we were having people doing three-point turns, and that's unsafe maneuver.
Another question, not for traffic engineering, but in the proposal we got before, there was a condition, and I'm just want to confirm that that's still in the resolution, and that is, if this does become a traffic problem and we do identify that there is backed-up traffic and a consistent issue on that way, because of this, we have the right to go in and correct it, get it corrected, resolve it, shut it down, what have you?
Yes, the use permit, the way use permits function essentially is if the business is not operating in compliance with that use permit, there are procedures in which the city could reevaluate that permit. I believe it's actually built into the use permit. I'm sorry, I don't know the exact language.
Dave, perhaps you could give us some clarity on that because I think you gave us some pretty good information last time on it.
Yeah, so Condition 18 in the use permit is a requirement that says, "Drive-through vehicle queuing shall not extend onto Travis Boulevard or impede parking spaces on the site." So they're obligated via this, but the terms of the agreement, oh, I'm sorry, not the agreement, the use permit, to not queue back onto Travis Boulevard. If we're discovering that they are queuing, there's essentially a pathway that we follow. So the first thing is, we either see it ourselves or we get complaints that they're queuing, we will reach out to the manager or the owner, whoever the recipient here is of the use permit, and communicate to them that we've noticed that you're not complying with the use permit. And we will first give them an opportunity to fix the issue. If however, they do not fix the issue or it continues, then the use permit, staff can bring that back to the planning commission, and the planning commission who issued the use permit can review the issue and vote if the commission chooses to, following a public hearing, to rescind that use permit, essentially take away their permission.
Thank you. Another question regarding that. My original concern was not so much the queuing, because there's a differentiation between queuing and releasing. All right, the cars come in, they queue up to order, and then they're released to drive back out. My concern has always been the drive-back-out, when they release, when they're coming through, and it's just one after another. There's just a steady stream of never, there's never a pause for a car not coming out, which is going to impede the oncoming traffic, which is what my biggest concern is, because you have that traffic coming. Now, we get that with the now Chevron, which used to be the AMPM and, you know, the fast-food central and everything right there. And I did go and I really watched that intersection. We have an office by there, so I was fortunate to kind of spend some time in that area and really look at that. I mean, I think it's an ideal location for Dutch Brothers. It's always been my concern, though, that when they're coming out, that that's going to cause the problem, is when they're, they're just, I don't foresee there ever being 25 cars in line there to buy the coffee, but even if there are 10 and there's a consistent 10, that means every, there's just a constant car coming out of that driveway 100% of the time, and that was my only concern from originally.
Yeah, and as we look at it, you know, with a drive-through use, it's not like they're just handing, handing, handing out, and the cars are flowing through nonstop. There is a pause for that car to get their order, to, you know, to accept that order. And so there is a break, you know, it's not like the cars are just cycling through there without stopping. So there should be some breaks between each car that leaves.
And I do notice if you have them into In-N-Out in some time, and they do it at Chick-fil-A and other places now, the stacking not only works, but, you know, at In-N-Out, which used to be a much bigger problem than it is now with having the attendants out there taking those orders to get that traffic moving quicker, has helped a lot. Spending more time with this project, I'm in favor of it, so I think that, you know, it's spot-on. I like the new look here. I think that the, taking the retail out is a good idea because I think that that unloads the traffic congestion that could build up in there as well. Big fan of Dutch Brothers and what they do and how they contribute to the community, so I don't have any other problems with that.
I just wanted to add one thing for the group in reference to the use permit. Dave highlighted Item 18. Item 19, the last sentence, actually references the section of zoning ordinance that outlines the process for the planning commission to reevaluate a use permit.
Any other questions?
I was satisfied with the explanations.
I do have a couple of quick items. First of all, we really appreciate you reaching out to the Highway Patrol, and I think that was an important component to this. What about Dollar Tree? Has there been any communication with them, and can you give us any insight as to whether they have concerns?
Yeah, I'll defer a little to the applicant. It's my understanding that there is an agreement between the Dollar Tree and the Dutch Bros as there's a lot of shared access in utilities, but when the applicant has a moment to speak, I'll let them answer that.
Okay.
Yeah, and one additional piece of information for context, I can't remember if any of you were on the planning commission when the previous use was proposed for the site. It was a quick-quack car wash. That was a case where the Dollar Tree actually came and told us, no, we've got problems with this, and they're not, they haven't expressed any concerns.
And that car wash went now next to the Motel 6 behind the...
Yeah, Quick Quack found a different location in the exact same neighborhood, but, and a location where Dollar Tree wasn't going to complain about it, so.
Can you remind us the capacity of the current site on North Texas? What the drive-through?
Oh, on West Texas?
West Texas.
I believe it's 14 stalls. I got a thumbs up for our transportation planner.
Okay.
And if I remember correctly, one of the drive-throughs, I think they're on either side, doesn't have nearly as much stacking, and so it's the one where you stack as you come into the site right off the driveway. That actually has quite a bit fewer stacking spaces there.
Yeah, if you're familiar with the layout, the drive-through that I think most people see immediately runs parallel to West Texas, so as you pull into the driveway, you're immediately turning into that drive-through, and so the potential of the overflow to backup is greater, whereas with this project layout, you have, of course, 25 stalls, but then you also have about 250 linear feet of the parking lot before you're reaching Travis Boulevard.
Right, and as I recall, the comment from the applicant at the last meeting was that by building this location, it will ease some of the pressure on the Texas street location. Okay.
Person Matthews?
Yes.
This is Commissioner Werble. I do have a couple of comments.
Please.
So, well, actually, one question. I was curious, and I don't know if staff can answer this, the three order-waiting spaces, was that just an arbitrary number? There's additional, I guess, 25 spaces that they're adding, so I'd like to hear more about that. And then for Mr. Feinstein, is there ever a provisional approval for a project of this
So I'll answer the second part, which you asked me. This is Dave Feinstein. The entitlements are not provisional, they are essentially official and final upon the vote of the planning commission.
Thank you.
And I'll defer to the applicant on where three was decided upon for the order-waiting
Okay, at this point, any other questions from the commissioners? At this point, I am opening the, reopening the public hearing portion.
Mr. Chairman, the Murphy, the Commissioner. Tom Filippi, Filippi Engineering. We're representing Dutch Brothers here tonight. Kaylee Slover and Gary Ganser are joining us by Zoom, and they are attending. I just would like to start by making a slight editorial comment if I could. I have been doing this kind of work for 45 years, and I will tell you that you will never, no community will have a better community partner than Dutch Brothers in terms of how they approach a project. We listened very intently at the planning commission meeting in January, and we met as a team the next day, and we immediately decided what could we do to address the concerns of the city. I reached out to a personal friend of mine who happens to be in the CHP, who happened to be the commander of the Fairfield office before Steve West. And Mark Hedrick made that introduction for me, and so I reached out to Commander West, and we had a series of great conversations, and I understood completely what his concerns were and how we could address them. And Dutch Brothers' comment was, you know, even though this isn't directly related to their project, that they wanted to be a good community partner and wanted to do whatever we could do to improve and enhance the In-N-Out for the CHP. So that design that you saw on there was our design at the, at the direction, thank you, right there, was our design in discussions with Commander West and your traffic department. And by the way, you have a staff that is second to none. You really do, and I've worked with a lot of staffs all over Northern California. Maile is fantastic, your traffic people are great, David's great. It's really wonderful to be able to have an interactive dialogue with a team, with a staff, where we can make suggestions, they comment on them quickly, and we get to this product. I have my engineer here, Matt Ellison, he refers to the design of this project as belt suspenders and safety pins. So we have put every conceivable idea that we could come up with to make sure that the burden of the Dutch Brothers' success doesn't burden the street system. They are a phenomenal operation. To your concern about traffic coming out, their maximum number of customers in an hour is 60 in an hour. Sometimes they boost up to about 72. That's about a car a minute coming out. So if you've ever thought about how often a car comes every minute, it's a little bit of a break. There is some time in between. So we worked very, very hard on the queuing. The three safety valve, if you will, parking stalls are just that, they're a safety valve. If you've been to a Dutch Brothers, and it sounds like Commissioner McDonald you have, I certainly have, and they run the drinks out to you as quickly as they can, especially if you're one car with one drink order, they'll run it out to you, and you don't really want to wait if somebody's got a big order and, at the machine, at the window. So we expanded the escape route, so literally five cars could stack up and you could still get around them. And then even then, if you have a problem, we have three more parking stalls to do it. Again, I have never worked with a client that has been so concerned about making sure that we do everything just right. And I will tell you, this is one of the best designs, and I've designed fast food, hundreds of them, all over Northern California. This is really top-notch. I do want to emphasize a couple of other things, if I could. Dollar Tree has been a great partner with us. Before we submitted an application, we approached Dollar Tree, went through our design, took their feedback, and had the original design approved by them. When the changes were made as a result of the January meeting, we went back to Dollar Tree, showed them our revisions, they liked it even better, and so they are in total support of our project. The other thing to remember is, there was a lot of concern at the last meeting about the amount of traffic in and out of the site, we talked about that a little bit tonight. I really appreciate Maile's slide about bypass trips. Dutch Brothers, their model, if you will, it becomes a part of a morning or an evening routine. So people that would normally go down Travis Boulevard, I'm going to make my routine stop. And so she emphasized it beautifully because there aren't a lot of new trips. People are not going to leave their house and drive five miles to go get a Dutch Brothers, although I have, but, you know, not that many will. And so it's mostly bypass trips, and that's important to understand, so that's not new trips on the city's network. I think that those are the points I wanted to make. I really appreciate the feedback, the dialogue has been tremendous, and we really appreciate that, and I think the city is getting a great community partner, as I said, and I think an enhanced and great project. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Questions for Ms.?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to thank you for your time and your effort in coming and speaking for us and revising this and doing everything you can to really take care of the city of Fairfield. It doesn't always happen, and we really appreciate that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay, do we have any other speaker cards or anybody on Zoom?
So we're not showing any hands on Zoom.
And I see no other speaker cards. With that, I will close the public hearing portion and turn it back to the commissioners for deliberation and comment.
I'm a Dutch Brothers fan, so you know where I stand.
Please make sure you use a button on the mic when you speak.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, so I just want to first thank...
Yeah, so I just want to first thank staff and Dutch Brothers and Tom for, you know, putting this together, putting the presentation together, and, you know, really taking the consideration of the planning commission as well as CHP and Dollar Tree. You know, I think that's a good start to a thriving business and I think a good partner in the community. So I'm in favor of this project, and I would like to make a motion to approve resolution, PC 2022-02.
Okay. Just a quick pause before we consider the motion. Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners?
This is Commissioner Warblein. I do have a comment. I greatly appreciate the applicant taking under advisement the comments that we made at the January meeting and coming back with a substantial mitigation plan. So I greatly appreciate that. I still have some concerns, even though you mentioned these are bypass trips. I'm wondering if these are bypass trips, but it's continuous traffic. And with that amount of cars going into the Dutch Brothers and then exiting, I still have some concerns that it may impede traffic on Travis Boulevard, especially seeing just recently the amount of backup from In-N-Out Burger on, from Holiday Lane to Travis Boulevard. So I have some concerns about that. But great, great presentation, and I appreciate the amount of work that's went into these mitigation plans and queuing plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Eighty-eight percent passed by. That's amazing to me. So we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And Mr. Feinstein, will you make the roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Warblein?
No.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Cruzen?
Yes.
Commissioner Evans is absent. Commissioner Childs?
Yes.
And Commissioner Matthews?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you all for your work on this. We appreciate it. Okay. Item B. Public hearing on the request by Lewis Parson and Discovery Builders to subdivide a vacant 0.68 acres parcel into six parcels for the construction of six residential dwelling units located at the northeast corner of Pennsylvania Avenue and Brighton Drive. And once again, Ms. Sheehan is our presenter.
Yes. Hello. Thank you. Jumping right into it, Brighton Place. As just mentioned, Brighton Place is located on the northeast corner of Pennsylvania Avenue and Brighton Drive on a vacant 0.68 acre site. The site is currently zoned RLM 6, residential low-medium, with a 6,000 square foot lot minimum. Contextual map for everybody to give us a sense of where we are in the city. Here you have Brighton Drive, Pennsylvania Avenue, Air Base Parkway, and Interstate 80. Some key markers to highlight is the Safeway Shopping Center, Veterans Memorial Park, and Solano Christian Academy. Otherwise, the surrounding area is very residential, as you can tell. The site has a general plan designation of RLM, residential low-medium, and a zoning designation of RLM 6, residential low-medium, where the lots must be developed at 6,000 square feet at a minimum. The proposed project consists of a zone change, which requires the planning commission's recommendation tonight for city council action. And it has a tentative subdivision map and development review application for the commission's action tonight. Starting with the zone change details, the project has a gross developable acreage of 0.98 acres. Gross developable acreage includes the project site and land that extends to the center line of a local or collector's street. So in this case, we'd be looking at the project site and then about half, if you will, of Brighton Drive and Pennsylvania Avenue. So for the purposes of calculating density, our zoning ordinance states that you use the gross acreage. So under the existing zoning designation of RLM 6, the site can be developed at 4.5 to 5 units a gross acre, which would be about 5 units. And the proposed zoning of RLM would permit 4.5 to 8 units a gross acre, which would allow for the development of 7 units. Should the zone change be approved, the proposed tentative subdivision map would establish six lots, a private road, and access to those lots. And that private road would require a private access and utility easement. On these six lots, there are six homes, two of which are duets for a total of four homes, and two are detached single-family for the grand total of six. In the RLM zone, there is no minimum lot size. However, there is a 50% lot coverage requirement. The proposal meets that requirement. The code also requires that there are two onsite parking spaces, one covered and one uncovered, so that would be a total of 12. And it requires one offsite parking space, being a total of six. The units provide two-car garages and a driveway length that is large enough for two more uncovered parking stalls. So if you will, each unit provides four parking spaces. There is street parking available on Pennsylvania Ave and Brighton Drive. Roughly about 15 cars could park on those streets. Here are the general layout for the duets. The layout you'll see has the setbacks identified. These are all consistent with the RLM zoning development regulations. Here we have floor plans for the duet. The left side is the first floor, and the right side is your second floor. Give it a moment just to take in. And here we have renderings that show the two architectural styles proposed, Mediterranean and Craftsman. Going back to a general layout, we're now looking at the detached single-family unit. Again, all of the setback dimensions meet our zoning ordinance development regulations. Your floor plans, first on the left, second on the right. And architectural renderings. Briefly touching on the landscape plans, the proposal is consistent with city code. There are street and accent trees, as well as shrubs and ground cover. A condition has been included to the project requiring that all the tree species planted are planted at a 24-inch box nursery size. From a site improvement perspective, the project provides all necessary infrastructure and utilities to serve the six lots. The proposed private street here will also host common, sorry, common improvements, and you can see the utility lines that will run through that street. Because that is private, a condition has been placed requiring that a homeowners association or a property owners association or some association to the same effect be established to maintain those private common improvements. Furthermore, the design of the project and the conditions of the project will create frontage improvements to both Pennsylvania Ave and Brighton Drive. And lastly, there are conditions requiring that the applicant coordinate with the Fairfield-Susun-Sewer District and PG&E. As designed, the project meets city standards, so there are only a few key project-specific conditions to highlight. Stormwater treatment areas will be required. Prior to final map, the applicant must submit plans that identify the location of those treatment areas. And as you may have noticed, we are now requiring that all of those treatment areas be aesthetically enhanced with plant species and hardscape. A reciprocal easement agreement for the private access and utilities must be established. An HOA or POA or similar association must be established. The street trees must be planted at 24-inch box nursery. And in compliance with Assembly Bill 52, the city informed the local Yokohama Windtoon Nation of the proposed project. In response, the tribe is requesting that a construction tribal monitoring agreement be entered into. And so that is a condition of the project as well. Staff reviewed the project in compliance with SEQA and determined that the proposed zone change ordinance is not considered a project and is therefore not subject to SEQA under Senate Bill 10. Senate Bill 10 authorizes local governments to adopt an ordinance to zone any parcel up to 10 residential units, so long as the ordinance is meeting the city's obligation to affirmatively further fair housing. It is consistent with the permitted zoning ordinance height, and the parcel is an urban infill site. This project meets all of those criterias, and therefore, the zone change ordinance proposed is not subject to SEQA. For the tentative subdivision map and the development review, the project qualified for a SEQA exemption under Class 32, infill development. It is consistent with the general plan and zoning ordinance. It is less than five acres surrounded by development. There is no habitat value for endangered, rare, or threatened species, and there is no significant traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality impacts. Another summary slide for the group. There is a private road to access the six lots, two are duets, two are detached, total of six. There are 39 parking spaces, 15 being street, and then the four on each unit, two garage, two in your driveway. There are three floor plans with two elevation styles. There is a landscape plan and associated infrastructure improvements. With that, staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt resolution PC 2022-03, recommending city council approve the zone change, and granting tentative subdivision map and development review approval. I'm more than happy to answer any questions, and our applicant team is on Zoom this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Sheehan. Please.
Just clarification. Often when the subdivisions come before us, they're 100 times larger. And sometimes the elevations that they show us have nothing to do with what's actually going to be built there. In this particular case, because it's smaller, the elevations and so forth that we're seeing today, are the home renderings, is that what they're going to put there? Or is this going to be developed and then sold off to a different builder who's going to stay within the restrictions but build a different-looking home perhaps?
I would have to defer to the applicant if they are looking to sell this map. But as you indicated, when it is at this small of a map, I would imagine that they would move forward with this particular house plan and design.
Just a follow-up on that. These seem very similar to what we saw for the site at DMV. Are they?
Correct. At the last planning commission meeting, there was a project called Midway Meadows. It is the same applicant, Discovery Builders, so.
But the design looks remarkably similar. So I would assume, are they the exact plans or are they somehow modified? Perhaps that's a question for the applicant.
Yeah, I would say for the applicant, I'm sorry, off the top of my head, I can't recall if they're the same layout.
Yeah, Commissioner Chair, that's kind of my point, is that we get a lot of projects, and they kind of just say, here's the drawings, here's what's going to do, and then make it look real pretty. And then you come back in two years after they sold the property, and you look at what was built, and it's very different than what you approved. And I know that sometimes we, I just want the clarification difference of whether or not we are seeing what's going to be built there, if we're just seeing what the conceptual idea is that they have to stay within these lines, and those are the homes that they kind of made pretty to make us look, so we can kind of see a visual of what's going to be there, if that makes sense.
So let, once we get through all the questions, let's bring that up with the applicant.
Okay. My only other comment is, I love that we're infilling these little trashy lots throughout the city of Fairfield, because it's going to make a big improvement to our quality of life, so.
If I can provide one little bit of context, as we think about the house plans and whether or not those house plans actually get built, what we typically see, that situation that you're referring to where house plans get approved by the planning commission, and then later on they get changed, that's often where we have a master builder who's not necessarily the production builder. And they will then get the entitlements, sell the map off, sell the house plans off. That production builder will then come in and say, we want to build something different. They still have to go through a public hearing, get the entitlement, but yes, that's, sometimes that does happen. In this case, and we can let the applicant comment, this applicant, though, is actually both the developer and a production builder. And our experience has typically been with them, that when they get their entitlements, they build what's been proposed. And so these houses, yes, they're substantially similar, if not the exact same, as the Midway Meadows. We've got the two single-family homes in front, which are modified versions, essentially half versions of that. But you can actually take a look at the Ivy Crossing project off of East Tabor by the same builder, and these are the same houses. So they're actually building these houses out there right now.
Hey, great job on the Ivy Crossing, too. They look great. Any other questions from the commissioners of staff?
I had a couple of questions. On the 15 parking spaces for the street, are those like designated spots or just first come, whoever gets there first?
It would just be public street parking, so first come, first served.
And then my second question had to do with the tribal monitoring agreement. What does that consist of?
It's my understanding that when the tribe identifies a site to have potentially significant resources, they want to do training with the construction teams prior to any groundbreaking or ground disturbance, so that if any resources are discovered, they know the protocol, they know to stop, to pause, and who to contact. And then, once the activity actually commences, the tribe will have a monitor onsite to ensure that all that training is being implemented.
Got you. And then my final question with, had to do with the coordination with the Fairfield-Susun School District? I thought they would already be a part of that.
It's the Fairfield-Susun Sewer District. And they are part of it. They have general conditions, but it's usually some extra steps that they need to take to really get over to the finish line for permits.
Okay.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Hearing none. I will now open the public hearing period for this. Let's first hear from the applicant. Can we connect them via Zoom now?
And that would be Zachary Wright. Whoever needs to hear that.
Yeah. Good evening, Chairperson, commissioners. I'm Zachary Wright. On behalf of Discovery Homes, we're grateful to continue to be a part of this wonderful community and to please to bring some more workforce housing into Fairfield. I know you had a few specific questions. What we did provide in our application, we are comfortable, and that is the home that we would like to build in the community in this area, in terms of those houses that we proposed. And then, I don't know if you had any other specific questions, but thank you again for your consideration on this.
Questions from the commissioners to the applicants? I do have a couple of questions. Educate us on the approximate square footage of the duets versus detached singles?
I do have, and to have that, you can pull up, Maile. I think they're very similar in terms of exact square footages. In terms of the units, they're the same, but they're just an attached product.
They look like they're somewhere in 2025.
2000 range, yeah.
Have you established a price point for these homes yet, or is that to be determined?
That's to be determined, but obviously, we're going to do our best to make sure that it meets the area and the needs, so.
Okay. Any other?
Commissioner Matthews, I have the square footage, if you'd like. Let's see, the smallest unit is 2,176 square feet, and the largest unit is 2,524 square feet.
Very good. Thank you. With no other questions from the commissioners to the applicant, are there any other speaker cards? I see none. Are there any others on Zoom?
There are not.
Okay. I will now close the public hearing portion and refer back this topic to the commissioners for deliberation and discussion. I personally would like to echo the previous comments that this is exactly the kind of thing that we need to do in exactly the kind of location where it's needed, and personally, and the developer, as we all know, has completed many successful similar developments, so. May I, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I agree with Chair Matthews. I think these are the type of projects that I think are going to be, you know, less controversial and kind of build the city from the center out instead of, you know, some of the other ones that are a little more controversial where we're kind of going out further. So I think these type of projects are really good. They're going to bring some more, you know, bring some more people to the city, but in, you know, I think in a gradual way, that's going to be good for Fairfield, so looking forward to it.
May I have a motion?
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution PC 2022.03.
Second.
Mr. Feinsing, will you make the roll call vote, please?
Yes. Commissioner Warblin?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruzen?
Yes.
Commissioner Evans is absent. Commissioner Childs?
Yes.
And Commissioner McDonald. I'm sorry, not Commissioner, I apologize. Commissioner Matthews. You get two votes?
I'll take that as a compliment. Yes.
Get him a Dutch Brothers.
All right. Moving along, Item C is a public hearing requested by the CarMax Fairfield to replace a demolished building with a new service building and repave a portion of the southern car storage lot. Once again, we ask Ms. Sheehan to give us her presentation.
Yes, thank you. Last one for the night. All right, so CarMax Phase 2. The project is located at 2955 Ottomall Parkway. The overall site is 13.2 acres, but the proposed project site is approximately three acres. So to elaborate a little on that, you can see this outline here is essentially the existing CarMax location, and where you can roughly tell that it's unimproved surface is the project site. The zoning designation for the site is CR, regional commercial. Looking at the contextual map to provide a wider view of the city, you have Ottomall Parkway, we've got Highway 12, Interstate 80, and Chadbourne Road, just to highlight some of the big ones there. Of course, on Ottomall Parkway, you have several other car dealerships. And then, to the south of Highway 80 are our industrial parks, where you have Ann Arbor Bush and Jelly Belly. The site has a general plan designation of highway and regional commercial, and a zoning designation of regional commercial. A little bit of background on this particular site. In 2011, the city approved the redevelopment of two existing automobile dealerships to accommodate a new CarMax superstore location. The two buildings were proposed for renovations, one to be completely converted into what is the current-day CarMax, and the second to actually be demolished. That second building was demolished in 2013, and the approvals were to make way for a new approximately 31,000-square-foot building. However, that building was never constructed, and the entitlements have since expired. So that's why today we call this Phase 2. The project proposal consists of a new 42,700-square-foot building with a maximum height of 24 feet. Additionally, the project proposes associated site improvements such as utilities and repaving portions of the existing CarMax storage lot. The existing CarMax site currently provides all of the required parking. In addition to the vehicle sales lot that you would see at a dealership, CarMax also has a public and employee parking lot. This site doesn't quite show it, but the public and employee parking lot is right here. There is some fencing that separates this lot from their sales lot. And then along the front edge, there is very clear signage that this lot is their sales lot, and this lot is for the public and employees. In total, between the existing building and the proposed building, 230 parking spaces are required, and currently, 260 parking spaces are provided. Therefore, no additional parking is required as part of this project. The proposed architecture is fairly straightforward, as the building will be utilized as space to service vehicles. Conditions of approval are proposed to advance this design a little farther. Conditions include enhancing the building so that it is compatible with the existing CarMax building that is onsite. We request that they provide a wider variety of building materials and colors, and to create a focal element to break up the massing on the front elevation that's going to be facing Ottomall Parkway. That front elevation is the north elevation that is at the top of the screen. So jumping straight into the key conditions for the project, should any of the public parking areas be impacted by the development? There is a condition that everything be restriped to city standards. Stormwater treatment areas will be required, and again, we are requiring that there be aesthetic enhancements. Landscaping has been conditioned for that north elevation, so right in front of the north elevation, there will be a strip of landscaping so that canopy trees can be planted to further break up the massing of that building and kind of soften the image from Ottomall Parkway. And as I mentioned, architectural enhancements have been conditioned. One of the conditions states that the elevations cannot be solely made up of CMU block, as it's currently proposed, the entire building is just CMU block. We are requesting that they provide a variety of building materials and in a consistent and compatible color scheme with the existing CarMax that's onsite. Additionally, we would like them to incorporate a prominent architectural element to that front elevation, something that's going to be a focal point and adds a little bit more movement to the elevation, excuse me. From an environmental review perspective, this project also qualifies for a categorical exemption under the infill category. It is consistent with our general plan and zoning ordinance. The actual development site itself is less than five acres. There is no value for habitat of rare endangered species, and there's no significant impacts on traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality. Wrapping this up very quickly, we do request, or recommend, I should say, that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2022-04, granting approval of the development review. And as always, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And our applicant team is on Zoom.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Sheehan?
If approved, when would construction start?
I'm sorry, I wouldn't be able to answer that. I'd have to defer to our applicant.
Hearing no further questions from the commission, I now open the public hearing period for this item. May we have the applicant connect on Zoom now, please?
Good evening. My name is John Thatcher. I am with CenterPoint Integrated Solutions. We are a development consultant for CarMax. I've got Steve Huyak with the CarMax development team here with me as well, and Adam Merrill with Siegfried, our engineer on this project. So as mentioned, CarMax is seeking the development review approval to replace that previously demolished building with a new, approximately 42,000-square-foot service building and repaving a portion of that vehicle staging area surrounding that new building. Staff did a great job with the presentation. I don't really have anything to add to that. Just wanted to make myself available and the team available for questions. CarMax is very much looking forward to expanding their operations here, and we thank you for your consideration of this proposal.
Commissioner Childs, did you want to address your question?
Oh, yes. My question was, when would construction start?
Construction is imminent. I guess it's, as quickly as we can get our permits approved, CarMax would like to begin construction.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
Yes. I'm curious, will this increase employment for CarMax?
Yes. It is estimated that approximately 100 additional jobs will be associated with this expanded service center.
Thank you.
Excuse me, 130 jobs.
Even better.
Okay. Are there any other? I see no other speaker cards here. Are there any other people on Zoom wanting to speak?
We have no hands showing at the moment.
All right. I now close the public hearing period for this item and turn back for discussion amongst the commissioners.
I don't have any more comments, other than I'd like to just make the motion that we approve that resolution. She took it off-screen, so I don't know what number it is now.
It's 2022.04.
Okay, yeah. So move that.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Feinsing, will you conduct the roll call vote, please?
Yes. Commissioner Warblin?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruzen?
Yes.
Commissioner Evans is absent. Commissioner Childs?
Yes.
And Commissioner Matthews?
Okay. That concludes, and once again, for you, Meili, and the entire planning team, it seems like every meeting, we hear very favorable comments, and that's a real tribute to what, you know, in a lot of cities could be a bureaucratic kind of approach, the entrepreneurial and progressive approach that you take is much appreciated and very professional. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Feinsing, director's report.
Yeah, I have several items to present or to share with you tonight. A couple of items, I don't know if I mentioned these earlier, I think at least one of them I did, one of them I didn't, though, so it's a nice little surprise for you. Earlier this year, the city council approved a raise in your pay. Planning Commission pay had not been raised since 1984, so it was definitely time. Whether or not the amount kept up with inflation, I don't know about that.
We get paid for this?
But commissioners, you're now getting paid $50 for each meeting. Previously, it was 35. So it's certainly something, so. And that's not only for the meetings that we have here. If the commission has officially appointed you as a representative of the commission and you attend another meeting, for example, Commissioner Matthews serves as the CDBG Advisory Committee representative for those meetings as well, you'll get $50 for those.
Gas money.
Gas money, exactly. I'm not sure that's even, I'm not sure that's even gas money. So that's one piece of news from our city council. The other is, and I think I mentioned this briefly at your last meeting, the city council is in the midst of considering some changes to the Planning Commission's attendance requirements. So as you may recall, last year, the direction of the city council, the city, an ordinance was prepared that established attendance standards for the Planning Commission. The city council decided to relook at that, reevaluate that, and decided that they want to change the attendance standards again, making them a little more stringent. So a copy of those proposed standards are at your seat there. The basics is, first of all, the city council approved the first reading of this. It's an ordinance, it goes into the city code. So they did approve a first reading at their last meeting. Takes two readings of that, so next Tuesday, they would conduct a second reading. Typically, if they pass the first one, the second reading gets passed, and then 30 days after that, these new standards would go into effect. So at your next meeting, I'll let you know, did the new standards get approved by the city council? Commissioner McDonald?
Yeah, if I could, I just want to say, like, I was a proponent of this on the last time I was on the commission, and really felt like it makes a huge difference. We do volunteer our time, even though I guess we get paid $50 a meeting, but we are volunteering our, and contributing our efforts and times outside of that to really help the city of Fairfield. And I think that it's important for us all to recognize that being here is probably the most important part of it, because we can't do our job if you're not here. And it is, the most prominent point in this whole resolution essentially is that it's unexcused absences. It's just forgetting to show up, or just not showing up, or not connecting with somebody. And I think that that's an important point, and I think we all owe a fiduciary responsibility to each of us to do our best to be here.
Yeah. And so the basics is, you would be allowed two unexcused absences in a year. There is some guidance in there about what can or cannot be excused, and assuming this gets approved, I'll provide even a little further guidance for you on how to make sure you're complying with that. And if you have any questions, feel free, you know, just shoot me an email, give me a call, and we can talk about that. Let's see, one other item I want to bring to your attention, in the last month, two new businesses have opened up here in the city, the new kind of business for the city of Fairfield, they're cannabis retailers. We have Embark, which opened up over off of Ottomall Parkway, near the DMV. And then we have The Bright Spot, which is over on Walters Court, over in the far eastern part of the city, off of Walters Road. The Planning Commission did not have any direct involvement in the approval of those businesses. The city's approval process for cannabis businesses, everything goes straight to the city council. They have to locate in locations where a zoning identifies them as a permitted use, so both of those, the zoning was permitted, and they simply need to be issued a permit from the city council. There are a limited number of permits that the city council has said that they are authorized to issue, so in total, there would be four retail cannabis businesses, and one business that would manufacture cannabis products. Last year, the city council approved all four of those retailers and the one manufacturer, which would be over in Solana Business Park. So to date, there's a series of things that each of those businesses have to do prior to getting the final approval to open. So so far, two of the businesses have complied with all the requirements that the city council laid out and opened up in the last month, so. so just wanted to keep you in the loop on that. Somewhere later in the next, probably six months, we'll have at least the two other retailers, and most likely by the end of the year, the other manufacturer, so. The last thing I want to mention is that we do have some items that are tracking for your next meeting, so I do expect that we will be having your second meeting in March, and we have items that are tracking as well for your first meeting in April, so we're just lining them up for you, so. Okay, that's all I have for you.
The City Council had a meeting yesterday on the general plan. Were you on that?
Yeah, I was, actually, I apologize, I should, it's also fresh, wasn't teed up in my notes here for you. Yes, so you'll probably recall last, I think it was October, staff presented to the Planning Commission a series of alternatives for the general plan, different potential concepts and how the city could grow, develop, and change in different parts of the city. The Planning Commission provided their input. In November, those same alternatives were presented to the City Council. You may recall, there were a number of speakers in front of you who spoke about the alternatives in the Sassoon Valley area of the city. When the City Council heard that, they decided, okay, let's slow down, looking at the alternatives, staff go back, engage more with the community, with particular direction to engage with the Sassoon Valley constituency, and then the direction was given to slow down the review of the alternatives and to do it over three meetings, three special meetings. So there was a meeting last month to look at the central part of the city, where the alternatives looked at the Fairfield Transportation Center and development around that area, development around the Fairfield-Susun Train Station and the North Texas Street Corridor. So that was last month, and there was widespread, not widespread, but a broad support on the part of the City Council for alternatives that promote high-density housing around the train station, around the Fairfield Transportation Center, and complete relooking at the central part of North Texas Street, which has, you know, largely been an auto-oriented corridor. The direction from the City Council is, much like our Heart of Fairfield Plan, which sees complete transformation of the West Texas Street Corridor, they would like to see a similar plan be put in place for North Texas Street. That was last month. Last night, the City Council looked at alternatives for the Cordelia area, and they heard a number of comments from the public. I know the Planning Commission has discussed at length potential developments over in Cordelia, different concerns and issues have been raised. The direction from the City Council was to go back, do further discussion and engagement with some of the members of the public, and then come back, once we can present back to them, you know, their concerns, their interests, what are the things that they want to see, what are they concerned about, what are the things that are missing over in Cordelia, and at that point, we'll come back to the City Council and look at a much more focused, look at different properties in Cordelia, and figure out, okay, where can we necessarily provide parks, schools, things like that? What's missing? What, you know, where can we put that in? And at that point, the City Council will give broader direction regarding what the ultimate plans for our general plan should look like. So the Cordelia area, it's an, it will be an ongoing discussion over the coming months. Next month, we will come back to the City Council at a special meeting to talk about the Sassoon Valley section of the alternatives. Staff and our consultants have been engaging with, we've had multiple meetings with different interest groups out there, and so we'll report on that to the City Council next month and get their direction about, should changes be made to better connect Central Fairfield with Cordelia, and if so, what should that look like? So I'll report back to you on that after that meeting.
On those special meetings, will we be notified to attend those?
Yeah, and you are welcome to attend them. So the next special meeting, which will focus on Sassoon Valley, will be the second Tuesday in April, so it'll be the night before your first meeting in April, and that date is, I think it begins with a one.
I think Amber usually sends out.
12.
Invites for that.
Yeah, it'll be April 12th, and it takes place at 5:00 here in the City Council Chambers. It'll also be on Zoom, if you prefer to view it that way.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Feinsing. I know I say this every year, but being an avid walker in the community, I love flowering pear trees. They're just beautiful right now, in full bloom. Commissioners, any other comments, questions?
Yeah.
Okay, I now adjourn the meeting to March 23rd, 2022.